Good evening.
Thank you for your attendance at this evening's board meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which we serve, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All board members are present. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Would someone like to call for a closed session after the study session this evening for the purpose of discussing negotiations? Second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And do we do that for the agenda? I think we need to do that, too. So, approval of the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
None. Thank you. We will move to recognition of student, staff, and public. And first thing on our agenda is the Human Rights Commission's Diversity Day and the Peace Day winning tee-shirt logo design. So I'd like to invite Jared Lees to come forward from the City of Bloomington Human Rights Division, and, uh, Commission, I'm sorry, and introduce Cole McClure.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you. This is Savannah Salado. She'll be our second vice chair, pending her election next month, so she'll come with us tonight. So, we're here to talk about the Diversity Day tee-shirt contest winner. Every year, at least for the past several years, the City of Bloomington's Human Rights Commission has worked with the Bloomington Stool District Office of Educational Equity to put on Diversity Day events throughout Bloomington. This year's events occur on Tuesday, the 3rd of May, and Friday, the 6th of May. The 3rd will be at Kennedy, and the 6th will be at Jefferson. As part of this week, students will participate in cultural information booths, a tee-shirt contest, a peace run from Jefferson to Kennedy, and here a keynote speaker. Now, this year's keynote speaker is Wing Young Huey. He'll be presenting on Friday, the 6th, at Jefferson, from 8:00 AM to 8:50, and 8:55 to 9:45. He'll be presenting at Kennedy from 1:00 PM to 1:45, and then 1:50 to 2:37 PM. Of course, members of the school board are welcome to attend that presentation. Wing Young is a local photographer whose projects involve a number of social issues, including immigration, race, adoption, urban and rural life, dementia, faith, gender, homelessness, and youth culture. Wing Young uses photography as a societal mirror and window, seeking to reveal not only what is hidden, but what is also plainly visible and seldom noticed. As part of the Diversity Day event, students were encouraged to submit a design for a tee-shirt logo. This was open to all students of Kennedy and Jefferson. Those designs were submitted to the Human Rights Commission, and we did judge the entries and selected our winner as Cole McClure. Step up, Cole. The winning design is selected. It was selected not only on completeness, originality, and also the incorporation of the theme's peace and diversity in Bloomington. In recognition of his accomplishment, Cole is presented with a $100 certified check courtesy of Ritual Bloomington Credit Union and a gift certificate from Chipotle for a family of four at last week's city council meeting. Cole's winning design, as well as the other submissions, will be on display in the lobby at Civic Plaza until the 27th of April. So please stop by, if you haven't already, to see those before they're down at the end of this week. So, again, we just want to recognize Cole for his design. Cole, how did you come up with the idea for your shirt?
Uh, well, it was kind of a school project, and so I was thinking pretty hard about it. And I thought it was nice if we had, like, the City of Bloomington and kind of the whole earth inside of Bloomington.
Fantastic. So, thank you again, Cole. Thank you, board members.
Congratulations, Cole. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will move to the government classes at the school board meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that may, they may attend our city council meetings, school board meetings, and courtroom procedures. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So I see there's quite a few students in the audience. I'd like to invite them to just come up and state their name and their teacher. I'm pretty sure all of you are from Jefferson, so come on over, please.
I'm Kennedy Colmar, and my teacher is Dan Sterling.
Thank you.
I'm Alexandra Getters, and my teacher is Mr. Sterling.
Nikki Nightingale, my teacher is Sterling.
Hannah Campbell, my teacher is Mr. Sterling.
I'm Shelby Williams, my teacher is Mr. Sterling.
Michael Foss, Dan Sterling.
Kyle Schaus, Daniel Sterling.
Connor Swanson, my teacher is Daniel Sterling.
Thank you. Now, at the close of this session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for signatures on the agenda, which you can find over on the counter over there, from any of our administrative cabinet members that are sitting along the wall. Thank you for your attendance tonight. All right, that brings us to Part A, Board Business. Would someone like to make a move, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All Board Business includes our minutes, our personnel items, contracts and agreements, and our finances. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to Part B, the bid award for the Washburn Elementary Temperature Controls. Someone like to read that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please, Director Bennett.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the Siemens Industry Inc. offshore view Minnesota bid for temperature controls at Washburn Elementary School and authorizes administration to enter into a contract with this vendor to accomplish this work.
Second. Thank you. Our finance director, Rod Zepkovich, is here to talk about this bid.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, here tonight, kind of the last one of the bids for our Washburn project for the summer. I think, if you're aware, we came back to the board, I think about a month or so ago, with a rejected bid. We put out this for rebid and got some better bids overall on it. This is part of our annual all facility projects.
Thank you. Somebody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of this bid award, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Next, we have the Affinity Student Activity Registration Software Fee Payment Module and Bank Card Processor Agreement. Someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the Affinity Solutions Agreement to provide a software bridge and module for student registration and activity fee payments, and authorizes administration to enter in an agreement with Affinity Solutions.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. And Rod's here to talk about this one.
This is a process that currently we have been working with ties with the movement to Infinite Campus and to Skyward moving forward. Both activities, technology, and both our attorney and insurance companies have looked over this agreement. It gives activities and hopefully, moving forward, the rest of our schools, the benefit to use a online tool to be able to take payments for different activities.
Okay, are there any, okay.
Is this a, is this an enhancement or a better program than the one we have now?
My understanding from the activities area is it's a better program. It has more detail, more specific to their needs.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Are the credit card transaction fees are the same as the, as the previous?
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'm sure.
Oh, yes.
When will that be up and operating? By?
I believe it's with the start of the new.
School year?
So July, July 1st.
Thanks. It brings us to number three in Part B, Post-Secondary Enrollment Option Agreement with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. Normandale Community College for 2016-2017. Someone like to? Go ahead.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves extending the Post-Secondary Enrollment Option Agreement with Minnesota State Colleges and Universities for the 2016-17 school year at the same rate as the 2015-16 school year.
Second. Thank you. Still there.
If the board remembers, last year, we entered into an agreement with Normandale Community College to better both serve our district and serve the college in the way of a contract for handling our students that go there for PSCEO. It's worked beneficially for both ends, and that's why we're recommending renewing for another year.
Any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to number four, Resolution to Non-Renew Probationary Teachers. Director Bergstrom.
Madam Chair. All right, this is a long one, so bear with me here. I move the approval of separate resolutions to non-renew the following probationary teachers: Adam Barlow, Susan Bentz, Madeline Bowes, Elizabeth Gunkel, Julia Jensen, Paul Johnson, Melissa Krauth, Kimberly Lawn, Andrea Mulry, Kimberly Peterson, John Polhill, Samantha Scott, and Megan Warren. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 271 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 that the teaching contract of the above-named probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 271 are hereby terminated at the close of the current 2015-2016 school year, June 30, 2016, and are not renewed for the 2016-2017 school year. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the school board shall issue written notice to said teacher regarding non-renewal of the teacher's contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially the following form. Notice of termination, you are hereby notified at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 271, held April 25, 2016. A resolution was adopted by the majority roll call vote, giving action that your teaching contract will not be renewed effective at the end of the school year, June 30, 2016, and is not renewed for the 2016-2017 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to MS 122A.40. You may officially request that the school board give its reason for the non-renewal of your teaching contract. However, such requests must be received within 10 days after the receipt of this notice.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. Mary Burrows, Executive Director of Human Resources, is here to give us a little presentation.
This is the time of year that we start coming before the board to announce our non-renewals for the next year. This happens every year, as it did last year. I guess my recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments from Mary?
Question?
Sure.
Are all these people in this list teachers?
What?
Are all the people in this list teachers only?
Teachers, and then one, well, and one social worker.
Questions?
Do we, do we have an additional social worker at the school?
Yes. I, I can give you a FTE breakdown of social workers, but I don't know it off the top of my head tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct. We'll start with Director Bergstrom.
Aye.
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 Thank you for that. And that will bring us to an administrative update on negotiations. And Mary Burrows, I believe, will lead that discussion. I've, we have invited the district's negotiating team to provide an update tonight. We have two more board sessions this evening, so I'd like to limit this presentation and follow-up questions to 30 minutes. We can address any additional questions in the closed session. So now I will turn it over to you.
Okay. I'll go ahead and give an update to where things are. Obviously, the objective of this presentation is to provide an update on the labor negotiations, and also to address some of the questions that we've been getting from the community through our community relations department and other sources. We're going to share a summary of questions and then a response, and supporting data. So far, negotiations sessions, we did have nine bargaining sessions. We began in October 2015. The most recent one was today. We've also been through two mediation sessions. Contract settlements around us, there are only a few districts left still negotiating. You can see around us that most people are, so it's about 87% in the metro area have settled. Many of the remaining ones are in mediation at this time. Average metro contract settlement, 15-16, 16-17, right now is being reported as 2% and 2%. Some districts made the increase retroactive to January 26th instead of July 2015 for the first year of that 2%. So the retro pay only went back part of the year. We did have a question on how teacher pay compares to neighboring school districts. I know I gave you some information in last board session, and I don't think people totally understood how we came up with that comparison. We did take other schedules and placed our teachers into those schedules. So if, if we were paying our teachers based on the salary schedules of neighboring districts, our costs would go down. I think some perception was out there that we were looking at the cost of that district's teachers versus the cost of our teachers. And obviously, that's not a true comparison, and if you're a smaller district, it would be lower because they have fewer FTE or teachers on their staff. So this is how we did it. This is our teaching salary schedule, 2014-2015. I'm just going to show you an example of how the comparisons were done, just by picking some cells across the schedules. So BA, BA 20, step 4, master, step 10, and master, step 12, plus 30, step 12. So I'll just show briefly Edina. BA first year, BA plus 30, fourth year, MA 10th year, and MA plus 30, 15th year. How Edina stacks up to Bloomington's salary schedule. We used Edina's 16-17 contract year with their increases incorporated. We used our 14-15 with no change to contract at this point. Eden Prairie, same thing. As you can see, it depends on the cell. Sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower. It's all cell-specific. Again, 16-17 contract, 14-15 contract. We do have certain cells, as I said, that are not paid as high as other districts. The district never claimed that all teachers were being paid higher than all cells in a district, or touching district. What we were saying is the total cost, if we looked at our teachers placed on that schedule, are higher than other districts. So, for example, we know we have areas in our schedule that have, some districts are paying higher, and so we're pointing those out here. Contract work hours per day, I did talk about this last time. Other districts are having eight-hour days, Burnsville, Eden Prairie, Edina, Richfield, West St. Paul. We are not, we're at 7.42 hour days. That doesn't mean that people work more than that or not less than that, it's just what the contract day is. Contract workdays per year. Here's by contract what our workdays per year in comparison to other districts. Bloomington's at 180, Burnsville 184, Edina 184, West St. Paul 184, Eden Prairie 185, and Richfield 185. We got the question, how are teachers paid? What is the salary schedule? What are steps and lanes? Teachers are paid according to a negotiated salary schedule that includes steps, which is their years of service in a district, and lanes, educational levels. Now, if you move districts, like go from Bloomington to Edina, they will give you usually credit for your previous year's teaching experience and place you on that, you know, schedule, or on that step in their schedule as well. Some districts do that, some districts don't. I can't tell what the practice is for each district around us. Sometimes a CAPP, people coming in can only get paid at step 3. It's all dependent on the contract and what the district practices. We pay according to years of experience out, and lane education. So our steps are on the side, our lanes acrossed. So the lanes across are education attainment, and the credits beyond that degree for people who are new to education. And the steps going down, again, are the years of service. After step 12 in the district, we have longevity steps of 18, 23, and 28. So when they hit those years, they're bumped up those steps at that time. So, pay increase by steps, this is what our schedule is currently. That's what the pay increases per step, just by moving a step across the schedule. We had questions about that. Our distribution of teachers by steps, so people can see, 336 of our teachers are on step 12. So, I mean, that's the majority of our teachers. You can see the rest of the distribution there and how it plays out. We have 819 FTEs, 41% are on step 12, 15% are on longevity steps. 362 teachers or 44% will receive an average of 4% step increase a year. Distribution of teachers by lanes, we have 819 FTEs. This is the distribution across the lanes. Again, the majority of our teachers fall in the masters or higher. So 32%, 266 are masters degrees, 28 are masters plus 30. So there's the majority of your teachers' FTEs. Average lane salary increase. This is a salary increase that you get by going lane, lane to lane, by moving up. So on average, you know, 2, 3, 4% except the BA to MA, then they get a 10% increase for that degree. Why don't we reserve, use reserves to settle the teacher's contract? We did receive that question. Using reserves to fund a contract settlement is not sustainable. Once the reserves are gone, there's nothing to draw from. Salary costs are continuing costs. They, you can't look at a one-year settlement, two-year settlement, it's ongoing after that point, especially when you increase schedule. Obviously, if your reserves are going down, the money needs to come from somewhere to sustain that, or else you're going to be making additional cuts or costs, savings somewhere, whether that's cutting staff, programs, services. I mean, that's a decision that would need to be made at that time. I'm passing it off to Rod.
You've seen this before, too, of where our fund balance lies based on the MDE, and it shows that we're at 18%. It's kind of right in the middle of our neighbors. If you look at, based on what our budget was for the 16-17 year, we're looking at that we will end the 16-17 year at a 13% fund balance. Just as Mary was mentioning, you know, how has things been used while our revenues and expenses, you know, when our costs exceed our revenues, our reserves go down, and the cost have exceeded revenues for the past three years. So if you look at our losses over the last three years for both transportation and regular general operation, you can see that we were down $1.4 million in 1314, $7 million last year, 2.9 were budgeted for it to come out this year, next year, $500,000, and then the following year, looking at $2.5 million. And with that, realizing that we've made in 1516, $4 million worth of cuts in that year, and we made $2.5 million worth of cuts in 1617. So, based on, one of the questions that was there is that, what is the impact of the additional 1% that brings us up to the metro average? Well, an additional for 1516 would be an additional spend down of $800,000 of our fund balance. The next year would be an additional $1.7 million of fund balance, and in 1718, $2.4 million with a fund balance. So if you look at our overall fund balance, at 23.9 million for both transportation and general operations, we were at 23.9, went down a million, down to 16.4, 13.3, 12.3, and down to 9.8, and that's before any other adjustments. Now, if we look at going to a 2%. We would be down, as I mentioned before, an additional $800,000 there, an additional $1.7 million there, and then down to $4.9 million there. The next question was, the legislature gave the district 2% increases here, and again in 1617, why can't we spend more towards settlement? We've built the budget every year with what the, the state has given us, with formula increases in revenue. However, the increase doesn't keep up with the pace of inflation, and other fixed costs such as utilities and other depart, other employee groups, steps and lanes need to go against those also. So if you look at our source of revenue, our total revenue from the state is about 72%. What we get from local levies is about 22%, and then the other from federal, and then other fees. So if you look at the state increases over the past few years, it's been a 1% back in 12, 11, 12, 12, 13, a 1 and 1/2 in 1314, and a 2 over the last couple of years. So if you look at the state revenue increase of a 2%, when the district gets approximately 70% of their revenue from the state, that's saying they're netting out of our total budget of a 1.4% increase each year. If you look at steps and lanes on the teacher's contract right now, we're looking at steps and lanes costs us right now at a 1%. Based on that, we have available 0.4% each of the years to pay for a salary schedule increase, other areas, steps and lanes, and also any inflationary increases in other areas such as utilities and the rest. Another issue we've talked about enrollment, are enrollment growing? Well, if you look at this back to '05, '06, to now, we've dropped almost 450 students during that time. Hopefully, we've leveled off or have a slight increase, but at this point in time, we're saying at best, we're flat. If you look at our projections that we showed, we showed the board before, this was a conservative projection by the Demographer back in December of 2014. Here was her optimistic. We had initial. We had initial projection at the green line here. And our current projection is showing flat at next year being at about a ten forty-five. Next year with slight growth up to a ten five fifty, or ten oh fifty-five. So, why won't the district settle at the metro average? The issue is, it's the financial responsibility. We can't sustain giving an additional, another one percent. If we did, we'd face an additional six point two million dollars in cuts. So if we looked at the two point five, it would be another three point seven on top of that two point five. This impact would be thirty to fifty positions, increasing class size, or eliminating different programs. This came from the audit report that was talked about many times. You can kind of see that if you really take the two pieces here, the instructional piece, which includes both regular instruction, special ed instruction, and career tech, sixty-seven percent of our budget is in that area. If you look at the instructional support, which is your assistant principals, the counselors in that type of area, you're looking at another six percent. Transportation, psychologists, social workers, and the rest is another eight. So if you combine those two, you're at eighty percent of the, or eighty, eighty-one percent of the total budget is based within those three areas. If you look what we've done over the last few years in budget reductions along with spending down fund balance, we had a budget reduction in eleven-twelve of two point seven. Fifty thousand in thirteen. Six hundred and sixty thousand in fourteen. One, a hundred and twenty thousand. Our big cut last year of, or this year of four million dollars. An additional two point five million dollars this year. So a total over the six-year period of, of ten point one million dollars. Questions?
First of all, thank you. I'm, I, I'm a visual learner, so I appreciate the graphs and charts. I, I do want to just sort of introduce, Paul came into the conversation. And the fact that Dawn moved from here to here is because she's on the, the team. So, the question that I have, from two weeks ago when we were right here at this particular spot, to now, I've been out walking around in district, talking to people. I'm getting a lot of questions. And one question that keeps coming up is, I hear the teachers don't have a contract. Why don't they have a contract? Can you help me understand that? They're, they're currently not working with a contract, sorry. If that helps.
They're currently working with a contract. The, the thirteen-fifteen contract is still in force. It, it, the contract doesn't end if you're not bargained, if you don't have an agreement on what salary is or what the terms and conditions are going to be for the next contract. It's in force until that contract is settled then. So it's not entirely, yeah, so they're, they are under contract. But the terms and the conditions of that next contract have not been settled yet. But they're under the previous contract.
It's just, I, I, I sort of, I tried to condense what I was hearing. And people were asking, do they really not have a con, what's going on? Well, how come they're doing this? So, there is a contract, they, they do have some, some language specified. It's just not the current one.
Right, the terms and conditions of the previous contract continue until the next contract is settled and agreed upon. So things just carry forward.
Great.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director Bennett.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the salary schedule, that you've selected certain cells to, for comparison, why was it that those cells were selected?
They were just random. We were just trying to show a cross-section. As, as I said, there are some cells in a contract that may be higher in other districts. There are some cells that are mainly lower in other districts. So we were just trying to give an example of the methodology of how you look at different cells in a contract. We, what we did is we took the entire teacher, our FTEs, placed them in those other contracts at the salary levels that they would be paid based on their current step and lane. And that's how we determined. So we wanted to acknowledge, yes, there are definitely, there are cells that we know that are maybe lower than some, not all. But we have a lot of cells that are much higher too. So, and when you look at the overall cost, it would, as I said, it would be less expensive to move to other salary schedules than ours, yeah.
Okay, well, I ask, cause just looking at this, you're thinking, okay, you're just selecting these four cells. Is this cherry picking, that these are the ones that show us in positive light?
No, they were random. In fact, we showed very clearly that we were lower and we acknowledged that, so.
Director Bennett, the superintendent liked to.
Mary may not be aware of this thing, but there was some rationale used to select those four cells. First, we chose the beginning cell, which is top, top, right, and corner. And then we assumed after three years, a person would be achieving tenure. So we went to be twenty fourth cell, assuming that the person would have earned twenty credits. And then we went down to ten years to assume that the person had achieved their MA by the tenth year. And then we went to the twelfth year, assuming that they would pick up an additional thirty credits by then. That was just the rationale. It may not have been shared with the.
Right, and also on this lane, the top lane, lane is Ed Specialist or Doctor. Is that include an MA plus sixty, or is there no lane for MA plus sixty?
We do not have a lane for MA plus sixty. That's a doctorate or specialist.
So an MA, so if someone had an MA and sixty credits, they would be on the MA plus thirty lane? Okay. And also, I guess same question, why were, did you choose Edina and Eden Prairie? As the comparisons and the other ones that are touching this, would, do they stack up the same? Or is it kind of?
Actually, Edina and Eden Prairie are probably, I would imagine, most of the, the best competitor as far as pay. So they're probably the closest. The top three that I, I would say, after looking at all my groups, would be Edi, Edina, Eden Prairie, and Richfield. Those are the three that were closest to us. And those are the numbers that I shared out with the board a week ago.
Cause you know, when you, when you share some information and not others, then people might accuse you of, you know, cherry picking and say, well, you didn't show Richfield because theirs is better.
Five contracts to show you, I mean, yeah.
Okay, and we've done the comparisons and, and our district pays more as a whole than the other districts surrounding us, correct? But, but when we look at, that's just a salary schedule. But when we look at total package, how do we stack up?
I did that comparison at the beginning of the session for, for board. I, I would have to look at that and tell you that totally. I don't have that.
Okay. All right, and I think that's, oh, the breakdown of those that are in step, step twelve. I see that we have, what is it? Let me get to that. Three hundred and thirty-five teachers on step twelve. Obviously, they're not all twelve years experienced. So what are their breakdown between the twelve to eighteen, or twelve to seventeen, I guess?
I would have to look at that as well. It's a good to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just another question. Rod, I'm sure that you've got this right on the tip of your tongue. Are, are, the board asked that the district not go below five percent fund balance. Where is that represented in the charts that we were seeing?
If you look at our, our overall with our charts, when you combine, because we're, we're doing a lot of combining of transportation and general operation together, it would be looking at about a seven million dollar number to be meeting the goal of what the board has put out of the five percent on the general fund and a million dollars for transportation.
So are we, if I'm remembering the slides right, are we rubbing, are we getting up close to, to can't-go-there land?
Let me move.
All right, we're, we're moonwalking, we're going backwards here. For those of you who are wondering why I ask that question, the board got together and we decided that five percent, we told the district, you're not supposed to go lower than five percent. We need a savings account. We need a rainy day fund. And, and my question, my curiosity with the, with the slides is, where do these numbers, how close do they come in contact to that five percent? And what does it represent?
When you look at it right here, at the end of sixteen-seventeen, with doing a one-on-one and doing the cuts that we did, it'll be at twelve point three, which will be the lowest that we've had since ni, for nine years. Looking at it into seventeen-eighteen, we'd be down to nine point eight, which would be the lowest that we've been in eleven years. If we gave in a, an additional one percent, you'd be down to in sev, in sixteen-seventeen, down to the nine point eight. And you would be below your goal at fourteen, at four point nine the following year.
And that goal is roughly seven million?
Seven million dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you. It's, like I said, I'm a visual learner. And it's hel, it's helpful to see where that is on these charts.
This chart here, does this, this includes the committed funds or no?
It includes transportation committed funds and general operation. Other committed funds, it doesn't. As mentioned before, those committed funds are, you know, some of them are for committed to teachers' professional development, principals' professional development, athletics, third-party billing, so that they can be spent on items within that area. So that is not included in that, this area.
Anyone else?
I got a question for Director Steigaff. Since you are the, the board representative on the teacher negotiations, you probably have more information than, than us. And you've been to all the negotiation sessions. Would you say that what we've heard tonight is reflective of what's going on in these negotiations? And anything else that you think you need to add or would like to add?
Ask, was there a question in that last part before you said, is there anything?
Is there anything from this, from this presentation that you think that you would like to add?
I'm sorry, I thought there was another question before. Was there anything you'd like to add? No, I don't, I don't think there's anything that I can add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I know we might be walking a fine line here, just because there's only a certain amount that you can say in, in public. But just from the session today, is there any update from today? Cause I understand you met earlier.
I would say at this time, we did meet earlier. We, we had a session. More people came, which, which was good. And at this time, we do not have another session scheduled.
I'll ask this, and I don't know if you can answer or not. But some of the questions we've, we've gotten, well, most, all of the emails that I've gotten and the postcards that I've gotten where they've talked about a specific increase or, or compared to a specific cell, is obviously, it's the ones where I'm in this cell, I make less. And so, has the topic of instead of a, across the board, one or two or whatever for everybody, has, has a topic of just restructuring the salary schedule? Or just doing a progressive change or, or something to that effect? Or adding more steps or, or anything like that? Has that topic come up?
We have not talked about restructuring the, the salary schedule. Although we have talked about different ways to look at how to distribute those funds beyond a one and one, one, one and one percent across the whole schedule.
I'm sure. So one question begs another begs another. You had mentioned earlier that, that you had taken a couple of different districts and tried to overlay them onto ours. The question that I got, it was a second or third most, most frequently asked question, was when somebody takes a contract from another district and tries to overlay it on ours or vice versa, they don't always fit. It's not a perfect fit. You just can't, they don't compare. Is that an accurate statement?
I think different districts align their steps and their education lanes differently. So you look at, yeah, you, you have to look at where that person would be on that salary schedule. So, yeah, is it an easy comparison? No, not necessarily. Because you, there's many aspects that go into that that don't align across all districts. I mean, different number of steps, different longevity kicks in at different years for some districts. Different education, you know, so we have ours at certain levels, they have theirs at certain levels. So it, it's not, yeah, it's not an easy comparison to do. So, yeah, it, it's not easy, I would say.
Not easy. And what is easy is to get sort of stuck in the, in the minutia.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
One last question, anyone? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mary, you mentioned that you cannot give us exact information. And I understand that about what, when it comes to benefits. You know, when you compare with other school districts. But when we look at benefits here and the increase of, you know, health and dental insurance, can you tell us a little bit about that? How that's going to impact the teachers and, and staff members next year?
For next year, there's a four percent increase to premiums for next year. That was agreed in the Labor Management Committee. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I was trying to kind of remember and.
Yeah, and there's no increase to dental.
I think that was our last question. Half hour's up. Thank you for your attendance. Bring us to board member reports.
Do you want to go first, or?
Yeah, let's rearrange the order a little bit here, so, so Dick can say ditto. Yeah, I was at the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee meeting on April twelfth. And then again, they have their annual public hearing with parents. That was on April twenty-second. And where they identify their accomplishments and services delivered in demographics and talk about testing results and all of that with, with the parent advisory group. And it was really an interesting one because it is a very small group. I think there's a hundred and sixty-two identified American Indians in our, in our schools and classes. And so with, with them being spread out all over to the, to the schools, it does represent an, an interesting demographic or whatever it is in order to have the curriculum that they use in there. But they're, they're appreciative of all the efforts that the district is doing. And so it was a good event. I also went to the CSAC award dinners, you know, where our recognized many staff members who go above and beyond the call to provide caring and nurturing for our special education students. It's always a good annual event. And it's just, it's just reminding us of the extra efforts that so many of our, our teachers and staff members do do for our students. The MSBA had the community engagement seminar that Dick and I went to. And we were able to highlight how strong our PTSA effort is, including use of all of our schools. And Duluth was there and Rochester was there. And mentioned those are the three that mainly have a big, strong PTSA organization. And how significant that is in our community engagement activities. They're always aware and putting out information on what, what we do and what they do in the individual schools. I was also fortunate enough to meet with Eric Paulson, our third district congressman, at a chamber meeting where he provided legislative updates and naturally extolled on the wonderful district Bloomington Public Schools is. And I'm sure he says that every other district that he goes to, you know. But, but he did have special recognition for Superintendent Fujitaki and the work that he's done on some of these other committees. And then lastly, I attended a couple of classes over at Kennedy where they have an open doors program put on by the district court. And where they have many volunteer lawyers and judges and students at Mitchell-Hamlin come and make presentations in the social studies and government classes in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Bloomington. And what's really exciting about it was last year they did the life of Thurgood Marshall and the effort and the example and the strong effort he had in his Supreme Court positions. But this year, the emphasis was on the thirteenth and fourteenth amendments of the Constitution, which deals with the abolishing slavery, citizens' rights. And I don't know if there's any government. any government teachers there, social studies teachers here that can, about citizen right to vote and citizenship rights that they have. So, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth amendment were what the students were, were being talked to about. And this was an, an attempt that the district court uses every year to try to get the, uh, to show and inspire some of the students to think about a career in law. And so, they have a lot of questions about some of these things, and seeing that our actual lawyers and judges are there in the classrooms makes a big difference. That concludes my report.
Uh, we had a principals' negotiations session, um, in the last two weeks, I don't remember what day it was. Um, we have our next meeting this Wednesday at one-thirty, so crossing my fingers on that one. Uh, I was also invited to the Area Three Rotary Club's Vocational Ethics Day. They invited, uh, public high school students from Bloomington, so Kennedy and Jefferson attended, Eden Prairie, Edina, and Richfield. Um, and the keynote speaker was David Irwin, who, um, actually, I don't know if he's still a Bloomington resi- resident, but he was a Bloomington resident, and, uh, the topic was what happens to good people when they do bad things? And so, it was, he, he said, "It's not surprising, there are consequences." And, uh, it was a very in- uh, interesting and inspirational, uh, speech that he gave from his personal experience. So, that's what I did in the last couple of weeks.
Well, first of all, on the, when was it, the thirteenth, there was a Labor Management meeting that I was unable to attend, so thank you, Director Bergstrom, for going in my place. I was actually in intermediate district nine seventeen for the entire day. I was doing that for, for two different reasons. One, I needed the hours for my, for class I'm taking in Mankato, but also I wanted to see what our intermediate district does, cause those are where our, our severe, our kids with severe special needs go to. So, I was, I spent the entire day there, and probably drove over a hundred miles going to the four different sites, and that's the, um, district that Director Bergstrom is the chair on, and for those of you that haven't gone out to that district, I would encourage you to go on the tour. Maybe not the eight-hour tour that I did, but maybe just go meet with the director of special ed or the superintendent, and they're doing a lot of wonderful things out there. And also, let's see, what else did I, I went to the, the following night, I went to the Parent Advisory Council for ECFE. I was filling in for Director Aliva, who couldn't make it. And, um, there's a couple of events that they have coming up. They have a Memorial Day Parade, which is on Memorial Day. I don't know if the board is gonna have any presence in the Memorial Day Parade like last year, but if not, they would love to have board members walking with them. I've walked with them, I don't know, the past five years or however long that parade's been going on, something like that. So, it's a lot of fun. It's a short parade, and Deb's always there on the side collecting candy and, and ice pops and saying hello, so it's a fun one to do. Also went to the Olson Elementary PTA meeting, oh, I'm sorry, with, for, also, they're, they're starting a, a family learners academy. They have the Family Learners Academy there, and they're starting a, a library for the, for the kids. So, they're looking for donations. They're trying to, in each student's home, they wanna have a, a good library of, of books so they can, you know, learn, learn English better, so four, five, six books. So, if any of you have any books that you'd like to donate, you could drop them off a pond, and they would put a part of that library. And then, so also, I went to the Olson Elementary PTA meeting, and they just completed last week their, their, a big fundraiser that they had, which was called the Apex Fund Run, which is something that they started new this year, and it's an actual, a private fundraising organization that comes in and does everything. It's like a two-week curriculum where they're working on skill building and character building traits in the classroom, and it's very, so it doesn't require a lot of volunteer work from parents, and it's something other to support the schools besides having to buy paper and wrapping paper and magazines, so it supports your schools in other way, and it's teaching them, you know, good values and, and being healthy, and I think they raise about fifteen thousand dollars out of it. So, the, the parents and the teachers that were there at the PTA meeting were, were quite impressed with the success of that Apex Fund Run that they did. And also, this Friday, they have the Family Earth Night at Olson Elementary from five to seven, so it should be a fun little event and checking out the outside. Uh, it's supposed to rain all week, but Friday it's supposed to be clearing up, so hopefully the weather will be nice. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Let's have a couple of things. Um, I had the opportunity to volunteer at both, uh, Westwood Carnival and the Hillcrest Carnival, so, um, great fun, great turnout, great events. Also, obviously, was at the negotiations earlier this afternoon, and, um, Director Sora mentioned the, um, Special Caring Award that the S- uh, Special Education Community Advisory Council has, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, um, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Team from Washburn. Um, I nominated them for an award there that evening, and I, um, just wanted to make sure that they get recognized for the outstanding work that they are doing in that building around, um, behavior and the supports. Um, you know, as someone that worked with, um, now Assistant Superintendent Mr. Melby in bringing the pilots for PBIS to this district when I was a parent on that special ed advisory committee, it's quite amazing to walk in the building and see the work that they're doing there and actually see that, um, come to life in the building and them actually, um, carrying it out as well as they are. So, I just wanted to make sure they get recognized for that. And then I also, um, personally, I wanted to mention, this is almost the end of Autism Awareness Month, um, and so on that note, I just wanted to, um, also, um, say that, um, you know, we've, we've had leadership that's created a new, um, great program that serves, um, many students with autism and, you know, um, one of the things when Director Bennett mentioned, um, the students that are sent out of district, you know, we work hard to create as many programs for some of our special needs kids in our district to keep them in our district, so we're not sending them somewhere else. So, I just wanna, um, s- you know, thank the people that put that program together. And, um, kind of a personal note, though, I, I gotta thank all the teachers and all the parents, since it's an other staff, um, since it's Autism Awareness Month, that have chosen to work, um, with those individuals, because if you're someone like me, um, you know, it wasn't really a choice for me when your son gets diagnosed, but they all chose that career, so I just wanna thank them. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pat one of my coworkers on the back. Um, I just found out that Don Steigaff is gonna receive an award for her advocacy for persons with autism, and, and you'll have to help me with the, the, how do you pronounce the name of the group? It's A-A-U-S-M-S?
Yeah, it, they say it awesome, but it's Autism Society of Minnesota.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, that's upcoming, and, and she has earned that, that award. Um, I, I was, uh, fortunate to attend Poplar Bridge PTSA meeting. Uh, I had a chance to answer some questions from some curious parents. Uh, wanna say thank you once again to our strong PTSA presence here in the, in the district. We love what you do for our, our, um, our schools and our families. As Tom mentioned, I filled in for him on the Labor Management Committee. It was nice to see so many familiar faces, and Tom, I think I, I might have raised the bar a little for you. I brought some good treats, so, those mini chocolate chip cookies with, with M&amp;M's, I, those were good ones. Um, had a chance to, um, to sit in on custodial transportation negotiations. Uh, our Community Engagement Committee met. Uh, Don is the chair of that. Uh, we went over some upcoming events, uh, not the least of which is, is a focus on the Centennial Celebration. The district is turning a hundred in this next school year, and so we're planning what we might be able to do to help celebrate that. Um, sat in for Rick, uh, Tom and I sort of doubled in for Rick on parent advisory. Uh, it's, it's always nice to see some smiling, familiar faces, and they had some, um, some questions that they asked, and I think together with, uh, my coworker, Tom Bennett, we, we were able to answer most of their questions. As Jim mentioned, uh, he and I went up to Phase Four Training, MSBA Training. This is part of our Minnesota School Board Association Professional Training. Uh, we, we do go to training frequently. Um, Jim was my driver, and that was, uh, that's always an experience. If you haven't ridden in a car with Jim, I suggest having him take you around the block. That's probably all you can handle.
We made it on time, though.
We did make it on time, yes. Uh, it's always nice to see and hear what our counterparts in greater Minnesota are doing, how they do it, why they do it, and just sort of, uh, pick their brains, just to hear what it is they're doing. Um, we have to remember that we are, we, in Bloomington, uh, we don't have different counties overlapping in Bloomington. Uh, in many of the, uh, in the greater Minnesota school districts, there are a lot of different counties that overlap, and it might be a forty-five minute, uh, bus ride for some of the kids to get to school, and they may not live in that same community. In Bloomington, if you catch the lights right from Indian Mounds to Poplar Bridge, I think that's the farthest, it's maybe fifteen minutes. And, uh, so we're, we're fortunate to have that, and it's, it's, it's just nice to see the contrast and, and talk to some of our counterparts. Um, had a, a lot of fun helping out at Westwood's Carnival. It was nice to see, uh, so many smiling faces. It was very well attended, lots of, lots and lots and lots of kiddos there. So, a lot of fun. Uh, went to the Bloomington Chamber. Um, they had a, um, Public Policy Priorities, uh, presentation. That's, say that three times fast. They have five things on their priorities for this year, and I was very pleased to see that one of them is labeled "Education and Workforce." And your chamber, which is, which is primarily your businesses in, in Bloomington, they're actively interested in knowing, um, what kind of kids that, um, that are coming out of Bloomington schools. They were really interested in our career in college academy. They were wondering if we could add more and more and more to it, because there's some very specific, um, um, niches that, uh, that, that the businesses aren't seeing, uh, labor force. So, for instance, if you have an HVAC license, a boiler's, boiler's license, or heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, those jobs are, they're out there. It's nice to have the, make that con- uh, contact. And then, uh, went to the Hillcrest, Hillcrest Carnival, um, just this last Saturday. A lot of fun. I wanna say thanks to the, um, PTSA. I'm, I ran into one of their members at Target, and, and I asked very nicely if there was going to be jalapenos for chips and cheese, and when I got there, there were jalapenos for chips and cheese. So, your PTSA council comes through once again. I wanna say thanks to, uh, all the folks that make those carnivals happen. And that's it for me.
Anyone else?
I got some.
Please.
Um, okay. So, first of all, I, uh, attended the Hillcrest Carnival this past weekend. That was always fun. Uh, and then I had the opportunity to, um, have a meeting at Valley View Elementary, um, to go see the, um, our kindergarten program, um, with, um, State Representative Erin Murphy. As, if you happen to know, Erin Murphy is part of the, um, Education Committee at the Legislature, and she's been writing a bill on universal pre-K. And so, she was really interested in coming to see how we're doing things in Bloomington and really coming to the conclusion that if we can do it in Bloomington, we can do it in the whole state. So, we had that opportunity of meeting with Carol Hadner and, um, some other people that are part of her team. Um, we also, um, have, uh, the BFT president she was present to, and we had a good conversation around, um, you know, the need of providing those type of services in the community, and also, um, the importance of it. And we also talk about the challenges, you know, the challenges that we face as we continue, whether we continue to provide those kind of programs or, or, or if we don't do it, you know, the kind of, we all know what the challenges are, but part of that was also, uh, in relation to our, um, early childhood teachers. That was also part of what, what we talked about. It's the need of, uh, providing, uh, you know, uh, more, um, stable contract for them or a real contract, but that's something that has to come from state, of course. Um, so that was one thing, and the other one is I attended the AMSD meeting, uh, last week, and the conversation and the presentations went around legal issues facing our state, state of Minnesota. And it was more about, um, the current, um, lawsuit that's called School Disegregate, Desegregation, and, which is the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit. And if you have read about that, if you have heard about that, I know Superintendent sent us some, a link with some information about that. And this is mostly, you know, kind of the, um, a group of parents and, um, people in the community in Minneapolis and St. Paul who are doing this lawsuit and who are called plaintiffs. I'm pretty sure you have heard about this. Uh, and this is Minneapolis and in St. Paul, but how does this affect Bloomington? Well, they are claiming that the state has not done enough to, um, to discourage the segregation and to tackle the achievement gap, and that this is happening there, but there are also some suburbs, schools in the suburbs that are not, you know, not doing enough for the students, and Bloomington happens to be one of them. So, we don't know what's gonna happen or how far this is gonna go right now, but it's important to keep an eye on that issue to see where it goes, because at some point, it would be important that, um, we as a district have some, you know, kind of a presence there, because decisions will be made, and those decisions might include, you know, things like you're gonna have to do things this way, you're gonna have to redo boundaries and think about this and that, and this is not gonna be, you know, you have the choice. This is gonna be, we're gonna tell you how to do it, so we're gonna lose local control there. So, it's important to keep an eye on that. Uh, what else? I think that's all I have right now, so I encourage you to take a look at the AMSD page and take a look at that lawsuit and, and see, just keep an eye on what's going on, what's happening there. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna add one thing. I also attended the Open Doors, um, presentation at Kennedy. If you would've attended the correct session, you would've seen my daughter. Yeah, is it present? Um, I also wanna throw in the Back City, um, the Bloomington United for Youth, uh, is a sponsor of the Back City, um, which raises awareness for homeless youth. This is the, probably the fifth year we've done that, and that will happen May twentieth to the twenty-first at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. And if you want more, um, information, you could go to backcityvigil.wordpress.com. They have a new website this year, and we hope a lot of people from other areas come and help raise awareness for homeless youth. And now, I'll turn it to the superintendent.
Thank you. I have three reports first. Our district's annual district-wide food drive, the benefits Vip in our community, started today. Second item is our elementary students will have an art show that will be hosted by the Bloomington Center for the Arts, and a hundred fifty of our students' artworks will be on display at the Atrium Gallery at the City Hall, beginning on May fifth through the twenty-ninth. The last thing is the national, Credit Union National Association awarded Richfield Bloomington Credit Union a Diamond Award for our financial literacy program that they have for students, and they are actually doing this program at Kennedy High School and Richfield High School. The board will be recognizing them at the May ninth board meeting, then the RBCU for this award. Next, the Cruz-Melba Report.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening? If not, we are adjourned. We will move into our study session. We will move into our study session.